Call to order, the June seventeenth, twenty twenty four Marshall City Council meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Schwartz.
Here.
Member Karen.
Here.
Member Chaney Huggett.
Here.
Member Gates.
Here.
Member Traver. Member Underhill.
Here.
Member Wolfersberger.
Here.
We have quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you.
May I move that we excuse Member Traver from tonight's meeting?
Support.
A motion by Councilmember.
Karen.
Karen followed by Councilmember, or seconded by Councilmember Gates. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to our invocation, pledge of allegiance, Chris Tarkwitz.
Thank you. If you'd like, would you join me in prayer? Father God, we pause to be still. We give thanks for the day. We acknowledge together the meeting, the work, the discussion before those gathered in this space. Scripture teaches us that if we lack wisdom, we're to ask for it. And so may ears be open to hear clearly and be considerate. May eyes be open to see clearly and have new insight. May minds be refreshed, to be alert and sincere. May our words be filled with care and wisdom. Lord, may you guide the hands, the business at hand here tonight. May your blessing rest upon each council member, the mayor, each person represented here tonight. We pray this together in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States and to the republic which stands on the nation and to this law of justice.
That brings us to our approval of the agenda. Under item six, we have public comment on agenda items. Persons addressing City Council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of three minutes. Comments shall address agenda item topics. Public hearing items should be addressed during the public hearing portion, item ten of the meeting agenda. Non-agenda items shall be addressed during the public comment, non-agenda items, item fourteen portion of the meeting agenda, followed by our consent agenda. A, we have city council minutes. B, our city bills. C, our Marshall House purchase sales agreement amendment. Number eleven. Item D is third quarter fiscal year twenty twenty four financial report. E, third quarter fiscal year twenty twenty four cash position report. Item F is our third and fourth quarter fiscal year twenty twenty four budget amendments. Followed by item ten, public hearing and subsequent council action. This is where persons addressing City Council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of three minutes per the public hearing. Under item A, we have our Oprah District Establishment for one one seven East Michigan Ave. Followed by reports and recommendations. Item A, one seventeen East Michigan Avenue for Oprah exemption to set a public hearing for one seventeen East Michigan. B, we have section three point one point one zero B four Regional Commercial District and section three point one point one one Freeway Service District zoning ordinance amendments introduction and to set a public hearing. Item C was one six five zero zero Division Drive, conditional rezoning introduction and set a public hearing. Item D is one two three Exchange Street, conditional rezoning introduction and set the public hearing. Item E is assessing services contract renewal. F will be our Marshall Law Enforcement Center access control purchase. Under G, twenty twenty four to twenty twenty seven Public Services Collective Bargaining Agreement. Item H is City Attorney Legal Services Agreement. There is no appointments or elections, followed by fourteen public comment on non-agenda items. Persons addressing City Council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of two minutes. Comments shall address non-agenda item topics. And then we have item fifteen as council and manager communications, followed by sixteen adjournment. Take a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Motion by Councilmember Wolfersberger, supported by Councilmember Karen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to item six, public comment on agenda items. Persons addressing City Council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of three minutes. Comments shall address agenda item topics. Public hearing items will be addressed during the public hearing portion in item ten. Anyone wishing to speak on agenda items? Yes, sir. You can come up.
Regis Klinger, three four eight Butler Court, Marshall, Michigan. I just wanted to comment on the third quarter financial report. I noticed the legal fees for the city of Marshall at ninety seven percent. A lot of it due to the lawsuit, and another one hundred and sixty thousand has to be put into that. I think that's an item that could have been avoided. And if you want to talk, you know where I'm located at. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Mary Wayne Adams, six twenty two West Green Street. Continuing with that line of thought that Regis was on. Spending money, taxpayer money, to defend a lawsuit concerning voter election rights is in fact a violation of the state statute on Michigan Elections Finance Act. And that's one of the issues in the criminal complaint that's currently up at the Michigan State Police Post, and the Attorney General is assisting in the review of that. So these kind of operations necessarily need to be intensely scrutinized from outside of the locality. So maybe we can get some form of initiation of remedy for the actual concerns of the members of the community. And when it comes to your explanation of financial reports and cash positions and that, how does that fit into the overall aspects of the comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR? That is the true accounting balance sheet of the municipal corporation. And it looks like the way these municipalities have been operating, that they intentionally compartmentalize a portion of the budget for public scrutiny, but leave a whole nother array of investments and, you know, portfolio construction, which is making some, you know, bringing in some sort of revenue. But that revenue is not being directly put into services for the community. It's, you know, working on its own without the community getting any benefit from it. So we need to, you know, people have been talking transparency, but this is the extent of the transparency that we need. We don't just need a very clear microscopic lens on a very small part of a, of a large bit of information. We need to be able to see the whole thing. And it seems that particularly with the progression of the megasite process, that there's been deliberate effort to keep the people from knowing what's going on.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on agenda items? Seeing none, I've moved to item seven, our consent agenda. Item seven A is our city council minutes, approval for the regular session, June third, twenty twenty four. Item B is our city bills purchases on five thirty one twenty four in the amount of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy one dollars and sixteen cents. Followed by purchases on six four twenty four in the amount of ninety two thousand, five hundred and seventy five dollars and fifty nine cents. Purchases on six seven twenty twenty four in the amount of three hundred and thirty five thousand, seventeen dollars and eighty three cents. Maypower purchased the amount of seven hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and seventy nine dollars and forty cents for a total of one million, three hundred and eighty three dollars. Three hundred and eighty three thousand, eight hundred and thirty eight dollars and fifty three cents. Followed by item C is our Marshall House Purchase Sales Agreement, the eleventh amendment, to accept our third quarter fiscal year twenty twenty four financial report, accept the third quarter twenty twenty four cash position report, accept the third and fourth quarter fiscal twenty twenty four budget amendments.
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Have a motion by Councilmember Gates, supported by Councilmember Chaney Huggett. Roll call, vote please.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
Member Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz.
Yes.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Member Chaney Huggett.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to item ten, public hearings and subsequent council action for the Oprah District Establishment for one one seven East Michigan Ave. Eric, you bring us up to speed on this?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. On your, I think, if your consideration tonight is the establishment of a Oprah obsolete property rehabilitation district for one one seven East Michigan Avenue. This tool was created by the legislature many years ago to help incentivize building owners to invest in their properties. What it does is it freezes an assessment for a period of time and allows that the gain which would come from, the gaining taxes which would come from the investment is realized by the community after that period is over. First step in that process is creation of a district. You've done this many times before tonight, so tonight you're asked to create a district for one one seven East Michigan where they plan on investing over half a million dollars to create two new apartments and a commercial space in the basement. Happy to answer any questions when we're done the public hearing.
Thank you. This time I'll open the public hearing for the Oprah District Establishment for one seventeen East Michigan Avenue. Persons addressing City Council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of three minutes per the hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Mary Wayne Adams again, six twenty two West Green Street. So what sort of legalistic operation is actually going on when we are talking about this acronym? It's an effort at getting government permission to try to improve your own property. Now, it seems kind of something that we really don't need government for, you know. People want to improve their property, that's, you know, part of what you do when you decide to, you know, buy and own a, own a house. And when you have to come to government to ask for permission, that actually is covered as a constitutional right, the overarching right of property. You got to wonder where, where things went wrong. And it's not hard. If you do a little research, it's not hard to find the, the mechanisms that have been used to create these devices of use or patience. And, you know, they're all derived from the governor exercising his or her emergency powers, you know, euphemism for martial rule. And in the constitutional republic, we have a right to use our property as we see fit without, and, you know, a right can be regulated by by government. If you try to regulate a right, it becomes a privilege. And that principle was soundly established in the first constitution, eighteen thirty five, that Article One, Section Three, said, no man or set of men are entitled to any form of exclusive or special privileges. Now, the succeeding generations were supposed to understand the fullness of those sparse set of words. And that applies to the methods of control that martial rule imposes on individual citizens. And it also applies to the existence of the corporation, the legal fiction, which exists, it's, a corporation's very existence is by privilege. So things have gone very, very astray. And with this new effort to annul all property taxes in the state, there's an initiative drive going on. Petitions are being spread around to ax the tax. Be a good idea.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing none. Close a public hearing for the Oprah District Establishment, one seventeen East Michigan Avenue. Discussion by council or questions?
Eric, could you, could you talk about what the audit process is for determining, you know, the actual amount spent on the renovation versus what was proposed?
The, excuse me, sorry, the amount proposed for the investments in your packet. So this, they're saying they're putting into it to make this facility work for them. Now, when it comes down to it, the assessor works with the property owner to evaluate it under different methods. There are, there's the cost approach, and there's also an income based approach. So they work with them to verify that, which is the best for both, which is the best way to approach it. And then he sets that value on it.
Right, but is there?
So we also have it from a building perspective, we're investing, seeing what's done, and this is the, I don't necessarily get all the invoices on there, they also have to put in this amount of money to get the state incentive. There's a state incentive to help invest in this. With our Oprah, just based on investment proposed for this amount, which obviously with the amount of work they're going to do, I'm not concerned that we're, they're not going to spend that amount. It's a substantial amount of work proposed for that project, and we don't do a back end check on it, but with the assessor looking at the value of what the work's done, it's in a way is checked. And in the state, we could also discuss with the state, the, they're submitted for reimbursement to show that they did spend the amount of money that can get them the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as proposed for that project.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
My only question is, so this isn't asking permission to do anything to their property. This is setting up a district. They're asking to be able to have the textual value frozen at the current, why they improve the property and not be charged against that.
Correct, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I would just comment that I'm pleased to see that so many property owners continue to take advantage of this. I think it's helped to facilitate a lot of investment in our downtown. It's going to keep our downtown vibrant for a generation, so I'm very happy to see it continue to be used.
And I'll take a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty four dash fourteen, a resolution to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district for one seventeen East Michigan Avenue under Public Act one forty six of two thousand, and authorize the city manager, city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion by Councilmember Gates, supported by Councilmember Chaney Huggett. Roll call, vote please.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Member Chaney Huggett.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Underhill. Member Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to item twelve A, one seventeen East Michigan Avenue, Oprah exemption to set a public hearing. Eric?
These, next up in the process is you set a public hearing. So we're requesting that you set that public hearing for July fifteenth to consider the exemption request. This gives us enough time with the new changes in the newspaper, public notices, and also to notice the other public tax jurisdictions. That's our simple, simple request for this one.
Any comment by council? I will need to have the, do we need to have the number for this?
This is just setting the public hearing, so I'm trying to pull up the motion for you, the recommended motion.
Yeah, there's not one in the packet.
I believe my recommended motion was just to have council set up a public hearing for July fifteenth. Because this is not an ordinance related, it's just a resolution.
Okay. With that, I'll take a motion to approve item twelve A, to set a public hearing for one seventeen East Michigan Avenue for Oprah exemption.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Councilmember Wolfersberger, supported by Councilmember Karen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. That brings us to item twelve B, which is section three point one point one zero B four Regional Commercial District and section three point one point one one Freeway Services District zoning ordinance amendments and introduction and to set a public hearing. Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The planning commission has been discussing changes to the B four, which is the regional commercial and the freeway service district height maximums for a while now. We've had some requests over the years for specifically hotels. We're looking at it right now, it's limited to thirty five feet, which is not sufficient to what everyone is building today. The planning commission had some concerns about some of the B four district area being close to single family residential. Didn't want to allow a high, that much higher property where it could look straight down in someone's backyard. Fair enough. So we explored options. And the thing we settled around was allowing up to sixty feet in areas that are greater than five hundred feet from an R one, R two, or R three zone property. The, if you look at the areas of town, the B four district is down by True North, which would not, I mean, everything in that area is more, is closer than five hundred feet, so that it would not be allowed in that area. The other area is West Michigan Avenue corridor. So from about the bowling alley to the west, they're greater than five hundred feet from the R one, R two, and R three properties. So they would be allowed to build higher buildings there, which is frankly, it's where you want your higher commercial buildings. The other areas, the freeway services district, which is up by the Denny's and the hotels on the north side of town, on the ninety four exit. Also, so that is an area where you'd want that kind of development. So Planning Commission felt this was a good compromise and has recommended that change. Also in this ordinance is a change to the B four zoning district that would allow financial institutions with drive-throughs. This is an issue that the ZBA has seen multiple times and looked at planning commission and said, hey, please change this. We already have two banks with drive-throughs. We've had two more coming in over the past several years, so this was just trying to levy the playing field. A financial institution drive-through is less intrusive to a neighborhood than, say, fast food. Fast food's open later, longer, you know, all seven days usually. Banks usually, you know, banker hours are there for a reason. That, that saying, so Planning Commission felt this was also a good compromise and met the goal of what the ZBA had requested for them to consider. So we're asking you to schedule a public hearing for July fifteenth to consider twenty twenty four. I just lost my spot, I think it's oh eight. Oh eight. To consider that ordinance.
Thank you. Discussion comments by council?
This is just setting a public hearing, but this has, as Eric said, this has been discussed at Planning Commission multiple times, and I do think this is a good compromise for, you know, setting the restrictions on it while, you know, allowing other areas to, to develop, so. Yeah. I'll make a motion to set the public here for July fifteenth, yes?
Right? Yeah.
Not on that screen.
I'll take a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh eight, an ordinance to amend City of Marshall zoning code, chapter three point zero zoning districts, section three point one point one zero B four Regional Commercial District and section three point one point one one Freeway Service District. Publish a summary in the local newspaper and schedule a public hearing for July fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
So moved. Support.
Have a motion by Councilmember Wolfersberger, supported by Councilmember Karen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to item twelve C, and one six five zero zero Division Drive, conditional rezoning and introduction and set a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I promise I'll have a couple more. One six five hundred Division Drive has requested a conditional rezoning from its current I one zoning district, it's a research and technological, right, research and technology district, sorry, to an MFRD, multiple family residential. As part of the conditional rezoning, which we have done a couple in the past, the petitioner is allowed to put conditions upon the rezoning. Planning Commission has the ability to accept them wholly or to reject them completely. There's no in-between, they can't say, no, we like this one, we don't like that one, they say yes or no. After review, Planning Commission did unanimously accept the, and recommend that council consider passing this ordinance. The limit, the big limitation on this one, and the big question we got from the neighborhood was, are you building high rises? This is a very unique property, this is a lot of wetland. This was where the Green Eden Marijuana Facility was going to go back several years ago. Thankfully, the neighborhood said, hey, we're glad to see that, didn't move forward. But with two duplexes, it's a very light use of the property. It's a good transitional area from the township surrounding a single family to our industrial area. So Planning Commission and staff both recommend that council set the public hearing and consider this request. They will still have to go through site plan approval after your rezoning is approved, if you approve it.
Discussion comments by council?
Again, Planning Commission went over this pretty thoroughly. The, the nature of this area where, you know, the houses across the street, even though they're not in City of Marshall, are residential. And so the kind of thing was, this would actually, you know, with multi-family, this would be a nice transition from the residential commercial. Eric, there is one issue, though. The legal description has the same parcel number for this and for one twenty three Exchange. Okay. Yes, so that'll need to be amended. Okay, yes, so that'll need to be amended.
I'll uh move to introduce ordinance twenty twenty four dash ten, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the City of Marshall so as to conditionally change the zoning of parcel fifty three dash zero zero three dash dash zero two five dash zero zero, which is sixteen hundred sixteen five hundred Division Drive from Research and Technology District I one uh to multiple, multiple family residential. Publish a summary in the local newspaper and set a public hearing for July fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Support.
I have a motion by council member Karen, supported by council member Wolfersberger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to item twelve D, which is um one twenty three Exchange Street, conditional rezoning, introduction and set a public hearing. Eric?
Uh one twenty three Exchange Street, uh they have also requested conditional rezoning from its current B three neighborhood commercial, which is your downtown residential zoning, to a multiple family residential. They're also willing to, they're also putting conditions on the number of apartments they may be in the in the building. Um if you are familiar with this property, it's a small white commercial building that's had multiple uses, I've heard over the years, uh dance studio, flower shop, garage for a funeral home. Um it's been mostly a big, pardon me, over the last several years. Um the current owner um has requested this uh to put more housing in. After a thorough review, um definitely a lot of discussion um with some concern on parking, which I think is another thing that we would take care of during the site plan. Um planning commission has recommended that council consider approving this conditional rezoning. So we're asking you to set that public hearing for that consideration.
Thank you. Uh looking at this property, it is uh quite concerning on where they're going to find parking. Um so they need to have that addressed for the public hearing, I would imagine.
Um that's, they will definitely be here to share that, uh what their thoughts are on that one. Um but also with the location of the downtown, there are also a lot of these downtown parking lots as other residential properties are downtown.
Right. But as you know, human behavior will be, I want to park the closest I can. And then you may have issues. They need to supply their parking.
No, and that's, that's definitely one of the issues that was discussed by the planning commission.
Thank you.
Yeah, the other issue that was discussed, um I brought it up, was um that there's no sidewalk on that side of the street. And so if you're parking off-site, then you need to provide safe passage for residents to crosswalks, you know, some some place you can get safely, you know, year round and um so that's, that should be addressed as well.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty four dash eleven, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the City of Marshall so as to conditionally change the zoning of parcel fifty three dash zero zero one, that's zero five nine dash zero five, also one twenty three Exchange Street from Neighborhood Commercial District B three to multiple, multiple family residential district. Publish a summary in the local newspaper and set a public hearing for July fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by council member Gates, supported by council member Karen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to item twelve E, assessing services contract renewal. City manager?
We're actually going to have a finance director, Doc, speak to that one. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um the City of Marshall is required by the Michigan State Tax Commission to have a level three or higher assessor. And back in two thousand eighteen, the city council approved an assessing agreement with B and V Assessing, whereas with Mr. Edward Vanderbrees is the assessor. In two thousand twenty one, we renewed that and that is set to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four. Um B and V Assessing has submitted a renewal contract to City of Marshall, staff and attorney Revor looked that over and we recommend that it is approved. Um the only difference in it is there is a forty eight hundred dollar increase for the initial year with no increases in the following two years. It's a three-year contract. Um assessing is contracted and it's it's saved us quite a bit of money from when we used to have um a full-time assessor plus an assistant assessor. We also contracted with the county years ago and didn't get great feedback from the the community because the availability was difficult. We have set schedules on Mondays. They're also available by appointment at any time and by phone or email at any time. Um Catherine, the assistant assessor, has also been coming in on either Thursdays or Fridays for extra hours, but they are required to be here at least hours on Monday.
Any discussion comments? I do recall when we were um contracting with the county, it was very, very difficult to get appointments, um a lot of mistakes and and going for the the tribunal. So um I think since we've gone to this, it's been improved very much. Then forty eight hundred over three years um on that contract, I think, is is very reasonable. So and we can budget three years out. So with that, I'll take a recommendation to approve the assessing service contract renewal with B and V Assessing LLC for the time period of July first, twenty twenty four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven and an annual fee of sixty two thousand four hundred and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by council member Wolfersberger, supported by council member Chaney Huggett. Um all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. Bringing us to item twelve F, which is our um Marshall Law Enforcement Center access control purchase. City manager?
Yep. Thank you, uh your honor, members of the city council. Uh normally Chief Lake would be presenting this, but he's on a well-deserved vacation. So we're going to try to speak to this. Uh again, the Marshall Regional Law Enforcement Center is in need of some access control updates. As you can well imagine, it's a secure facility. Um we share it with the Michigan State Police and also the Calhoun County Sheriff's Department. Um there's several things that need to be updated, such as software servers. Uh there's some door access controls that essentially have failed and are rusting. Um again, there's just several items, secured areas that need to have some updates. I, my understanding is some of the original equipment and you know that that's facility's been around for a while. Uh to that end, the city solicited six proposals. Of those six, the the they could, um the interview committee interviewed two of those vendors. One was K Group and one was Everon, which is former ADT. And out of that, uh the city is recommending that Everon ADT be awarded the bid to get these um these upgrades done so we can keep that facility secured.
Thank you. So the budget impact, it is all those agencies that are at the facility pay in to cover expenditures, correct?
That's correct. So all three entities pay into the Merloc fund, essentially pay rent and out of there we budget specific items such as operating costs, but also these capital type items.
Okay.
Funding is available in the in the current budget and uh it is below what we, they have identified for the um the access control equipment.
And then using Everon, would they also be considered, I mean, the more consistent we are throughout city property and and access control, would that be something we would look at as well?
We will be. Uh when this project first came up, that was our initial reaction. Okay, instead of just having one-off on every facility, shall we try to come up with a, you know, an overall program that would have access control cameras, key fobs, things of that nature? And it quickly ballooned into a project that was beyond what we could handle as far as scope preparing. Uh however, that did not replace the need that the Merloc had. So at that point, we just decided to move forward. Let's get what we need done at the Merloc Center. Then at some point, let's budget for a consultant to help us come in here and really look at the overall, all of our city facilities into a comprehensive plan that we can then move forward with. But at this point, we just don't think we can sit on our hands with the Merloc. We got to proceed with this. And this is the company that has, that is familiar with their systems and should be able to, from day one, get right in there and make these um repairs.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, concerns? With that, I'll take a recommendation to approve the access control R P in part and as amended with Everon for a total price not to exceed sixty eight thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty nine cents and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
So moved.
I have a motion by council member Karen, supported by council member Wolfersberger. Uh roll call vote, please.
Member Chaney Huggett?
Yes.
Member Gates?
Yes.
Member Underhill?
Yes.
Member Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That brings us to item twelve G, uh twenty twenty four to twenty twenty seven Public Services Collective Bargaining Agreement. City manager?
Thank you. Again, this is the last item I have for your consideration tonight. The city council is aware, especially for those that have been on here a while. Every year we have one of our union agreements that's up for renegotiation. This year it happened to be our Department of Public Services, which is essentially our utility groups, so our electric, water, wastewater and fiber net. Last year it was the two police groups and the prior year before that is was Public Works and the Fire Department. So next year, those will be the two units that we'll be having our discussions with. But tonight is the Public Services Collective Bargaining Agreement. We had uh multiple sessions of negotiations. Uh finally, there at the end of May, we had a tentative agreement that we both could live with. And then, of course, the membership voted on it and they advised us that on May thirteenth that they approve the T A. Uh again, the details of the contract obviously are included in the agreement. Um as far as wages go, which usually is the the most, you know, often asked questions, what we did is we looked at our peer groups, right? So we looked at some municipalities that we feel are appropriate, um essentially to measure ourselves against. And we look to see what the market is doing and as far as driving those wages to make sure that we can stay competitive and we we keep retention of our employees. That's what we did. So again, uh wage increase varied on year one, depending on what that market showed. And then as far as year two, what we did was a three percent increase and then on year three, a three percent increase. And it's been consistent, what we've done the last few bargaining uh agreements with the other groups do. So that's where we're at, unless you have specific questions that you'd like to go into details on, but.
Discussion questions, council?
Uh I'll just make a statement that, you know, uh give our thanks to our, our, you know, electric workers, you know, over the last couple of days. But all of our our utility workers are uh fantastic, bringing great services to the city and and uh well-respected. So uh but especially, you know, I know a lot of the township areas were without power this morning and and uh I didn't hear of anything in the city. So that's fantastic.
Take a recommendation to approve the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty seven City of Marshall Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Teamsters Local two fourteen Department of Public Services and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion by council member Karen, supported by council member Wolfersberger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to item H, City Attorney Legal Services Agreement. Uh city attorney?
Good evening, Mayor Schwartz and council members, Mr. Perry, Ms. Pickford. I bring to you tonight a request to revise our uh legal services agreement. I want to apologize, it was not in your packet on Friday. Fridays I tend to be in court about an hour and a half north of here and that was a rather long day. So I want to apologize for disturbing your Sunday and today with this document. You can see that the agreement is two pages and it's provided to you in track changes. This agreement's from twenty twenty one. By way of history, um for most of you who don't know, I spent a large portion of my professional career in Kalamazoo. Um from Kalamazoo, Van Buren Counties, I served in law enforcement full-time, primarily in the Kalamazoo County region. I came to this city in two thousand and four. I lived in the city limits, during which time I was on the planning commission. I was on the city council. I was on the ZBA. And when Mr. Dyer left being city attorney uh for Calhoun County, Mr. Tark would ask me if I would assume that role. In addition to Marshall, I serve as city attorney for two other cities, similar in assistant city attorney. I represent about a dozen townships, fire authorities. My practice is almost exclusively in municipal law. I am co-owner of a firm and we do have other practice areas such as wills and estates and workers' compensation, defense work. So what I've done is in twenty twenty one, this agreement was entered into and we have not saw an increase since twenty twenty one. Yet the world has changed since twenty twenty one. Um municipal rates tend to be much lower than other rates. When I was with Big Law, those rates were quite higher. But we're sensitive to municipalities. We realize that municipalities struggle, especially in Michigans. We've kept our rates relatively low. That doesn't mean that we've provided substandard service, hopefully, but we've tried to keep our rates low. Since twenty twenty one, insurances have climbed, rents have climbed. We've had to increase benefits and compensation for our employees. And fortunately, we have some very loyal employees that have been with us for, you know, anywhere between five years and over twenty years. So we've been able to retain them. The unfortunate aspect of this is in order for us to maintain our practice, we have to take on more clients or we increase the rates. So we have taken on more municipal clients and we're pleased to do so. We've made some really, really positive friends in our municipal uh clients. And I and I say that as friends. I mean, we attend functions outside of the billing realm, so to speak. Uh I think Mayor Schwartz, uh yourself and Mr. Karen when he was mayor and Mr. Perry will testify that on months that I don't feel we use the retainer, we don't charge the full amount, even though it's a non-refundable retainer. So I draw back from it. But we're in a position now that we just have to face economic realities and increased inflation, insurances, rents and employee wages and benefits. So I come to you tonight and we seek a one thousand dollar a month increase and also in discussions with yourself, Mayor Schwartz and Mr. Perry, uh the benefit of having used some office space here rather than at least another space in town, which is also a benefit to us. And we've increased our notice period from, I believe, sixty-day notice period to a hundred and eighty-day notice period. And the purpose of that is if at some point in time, you know, I choose or the council chooses to go in different directions, it allows you adequate time to secure appropriate and qualified the council in my absence, for whatever reason. So those are the changes to the agreement. I'll pause and stand for any questions that you may have.
Do you have an end date for this agreement?
There is not an end date because the mayor can uh select and recommend council uh every two years. So I do not have an end date. The end date is merely the the choice of the mayor and the council or myself.
Right. Any other questions or concerns?
One question I would have more for city staff maybe is do do we have uh an office available in a city facility or would we be renting an outside office space?
Yeah, we actually have one available here on the second floor, actually uh across the hallway there at the very end. So space is available. He may rue the day that he's actually in the building, though.
I feel like I've come to know this building quite a bit since twenty ten.
That I'll take a motion to accept the uh retainer contract for legal services uh with the city attorney and um for the fees stated within that that contract.
So moved.
Support.
Member Gates, supported by council member Karen. All those in favor. Now let's do a uh roll call vote, please.
Uh member Chaney Huggett?
Yes.
Member Gates?
Yes.
Member Underhill?
Yes.
Member Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh brings us to item fourteen, public comment on non-agenda items. Persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of two minutes. Comments shall address non-agenda item topics. Public hearing items should have been addressed during the public hearing portion under item ten. Anyone wishing to speak on non-agenda items? Yes, ma'am.
Rebecca Sebring, Fredonia Township. My family founded our farm here in Marshall in nineteen oh two. So we've been here a long time. My father served the City of Marshall for almost forty years and then was township manager supervisors and everything else. We love this town. Um and I really don't, this town is the people's town and it's not some- Um, and I really don't, this town is the people's town and it's not some elected committees town to do whatever they want. This whole mega site, Blue Oval, Ford cattle is owned by the CCP. Like I said, it's not a good thing. This is a security risk and I'm not the only one noticing it now. I think Washington's starting to. Anyways, uh, the lithium, seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons of infused lithium water rushing at our town, that's great. Um, so there's four of you on here that are up for um, your terms come up. And if you guys continue to run this town the way you want it and stay here, I'm gonna come to all the meetings. I'm not gonna back down because this is a free country and this is our town. Obviously, judging by what you've done, by the Blue Oval site and all this, you need somebody to do oversight on all of you. And I'll be here because my family's been here so long. So I uh, I just want you to know I'm an empath and I do not foresee this thing continuing like the construction stops. That's what I see. And I'll tell you right now, I don't join the losing team, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to your council?
Yes, sir.
Again, Regis Klinger, three, four, eight Butler Court, Marshall, Michigan. I just wanted to bring up something. I know the city is uh, anticipating doing some solar projects at some point. Came across an article in Facebook that uh, I think is really an innovative process for doing it. They uh, farm in Colorado, they're putting the solar panels six to eight feet above the ground. Now that allows for crops to be grown underneath the solar panels or animals to be grazed there also. So it's a twofold use of the land and the farmers can get revenue from either one. It uh, evaporation plants cools the solar collectors by about uh, sixteen percent, generates another two percent of power while they do that. The solar collectors protect the plants from wind damage, uh, hail and that kind of thing. Uh, the solar panels protect the crops, shade them, the water, the water usage is reduced by fifteen to twenty percent. So a lot of advantages to this. I will send this article to the city manager. I hope you consider it when you're considering solar collectors. It's it's the right way to do it. It's where you don't just lose farmland, you can actually still use the land for farming and for solar collectors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, sir.
Barry Wayne Adams, again, six twenty-two West Green Street, again. Talking about the city assessor and aspects of misconduct in office, uh, let me tell you about my little experience with him. Him and the deputy assessor, uh, and Mr. Revore knows about it. Uh, they tried to pull this nonsense of trying to take away my homestead exemption. First off, claiming I wasn't a resident, even though the criterion to establish residency is having lived in state for a hundred and eighty days. And even though I lived, had at the time, I had lived here for sixty-eight and a half years, that didn't seem seem to be enough to satisfy the assessor's idea of what residency is. So I ended up having to take him up to Michigan Tax Tribunal. Uh, and uh, did the initial pleading and the assessor comes back and completely changes horses in midstream and up there claims that I didn't have uh, capacity or ownership uh, aspects. Uh, even though I had shown all the documentation down here showing I had lived here, they knew I had been in the house for over thirty years. Uh, and I, you know, shown them the trust document that showed me to be co-trustee and beneficiary of the property, the family property. Uh, that wasn't good enough, took them up to Michigan Tax Tribunal and uh, I wanted summary judgment. Uh, I asked for sanctions, but they they stopped it there. So because the tax tribunal didn't allow sanctions, I'm gonna have to bring the city into federal court on this. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on non-agenda item?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Stephanie Klinger, three thirty-four North Grand Street. And I would like to end the meeting on a positive note. Uh, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so I'm a little nervous. Um, I've had some correspondence with Mr. Perry about the um, problem with maintaining lawns, people letting their lawns get bad, tall, unkempt. And I I really felt like he was hearing what I was saying. And he was responding back, which was really great because sometimes that doesn't happen. But um, I just wanted you all to know that I appreciate being heard. That's huge. So I'll just stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Julie Bryant, Squaw Creek. Um, so to kind of piggyback on what she's talking about lawns, um, I have a question about who's in charge of mowing the berm in front of the major mega mess? Because it's ridiculous. They planted all those trees, now you've got grass, it's almost as high as them. So if it belongs to the city and you guys need to be taking care of it, you know, if it was our lawns, it would it wouldn't it wouldn't be, it would be a problem. Um, secondly, I wanted to just kind of say, you know, I was not able to go up to Lansing for the uh, the appeals uh, hearing between the Committee for Marshall, not the mega site, and the City of Marshall and Maida. And uh, something interesting that I heard when uh, basically near the end is when the MEDC came up. Now first they whined about why they weren't allowed to be involved in this project and this lawsuit. And then um, secondly, I heard of um, basically that the city and Maida have no control on this project. So that they're just allocating the tax mayors payers money to it, which is our money. And basically that the City of Marshall and Maida are non-consequential, just merely pawns. Um, I just, for the state of Michigan, I just hope that helps you all to sleep at night. Okay, knowing that you are pawns and then doing the state's bidding um, over standing up for the residents that you were placed here to represent. Um, so instead of spending time running our city government, our officials are spending time on the mega site. So anyway, corporate welfare is government corruption and you all are involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, sir.
I have something for you guys. Could, is it gonna come out of my time if I hand it out or should I just? Okay. Um, to, well. Rick Sadler, Squaw Creek, uh, to piggyback on what Rebecca was saying, um, this is a letter uh, to the undersecretary for strategy, policy and plans of homeland security from the uh, committee, the representative Molinar's committee on the CCP. Um, asking to, that the forced labor task force immediately place CATAL on the Uyghur Forced Labor Prevention Act entity list. Um, apparently their entire supply chain basically is gotten with for or, you know, uh, forced labor. And there's, it says here on what, page eleven, CATAL supply chains are deeply compromised by links to entities whose goods, wares, articles or merchandise is mined, produced or manufactured wholly in or in part in the X U A R. I'm not even gonna try to pronounce that. Um, as a result, we request it be added to the UF LPA entity list and its shipments prohibited from entry into the United States. Well, it's kind of hard for CATAL to do anything here in in Fordland if they can't get any product. So and and maybe that, you know, I've been saying this for a year and a half now. I know that you you know, we've we've all discussed it. These guys are just insidious and they they just slide in wherever. And Ford is a perfect company for them to work with because Henry Ford was a Nazi sympathizer. So this just kind of goes along with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Being none. That brings us to item fifteen, council manager communication, council member Gates.
I just wanted to say, um, Marshall Rotary Club recently had a celebration this last week, marking their one-hundredth anniversary as a club, uh, and um, celebrating all the great things they've done for the community over the last one hundred years. That's all I have.
Yes, congratulations, President. Councilmember Underhill.
My only thing is uh, I we love to go into the um, pancake and chili cook-offs that um, the airport, if they can do a little better with their their marketing, putting a no. For for me not to know on Saturday of of something going on in town, it's like, that's weird for me. Um, to try to find out on our website, it's a uh, a year old on the website currently. So just maybe updating that because I I do love going to those, but with the good turnout they talked about, so it's good to see. That's it.
Councilmember Karen?
I have nothing further, thank you.
Councilmember Wolfersberger?
Uh, like to uh, thank Member Gates and the Rotary uh, for their very, very generous donation, uh, hundred thousand dollars towards the uh, uh, pickleball courts and and splash pad project is uh, great and and thank you. Um, also like to note the uh, just the number of events that were in town this week. And I understand why you had trouble keeping track of them all, uh, the Fridays at the Fountain, the food trucks, the net. Um, I mean, it was just, it was really, really busy week, but it was great. Uh, and that kept our, the whole thing, uh, um, the three-hour planning commission meeting on on Wednesday was uh, just a testament to just everything that's going on in the community. So that's it.
Yeah. Councilmember Chaney Huggett?
I have nothing tonight, your honor.
City manager?
Uh, just to follow up, this weekend, we have our Blues Fest, our annual Blues Fest. All that'll be, yeah, very popular downtown, it'll be hopping. I think the first band plays at three P M. on Saturday. So look forward to that, look forward to seeing everyone in town.
Good. Assistant city clerk?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just to comment again on our public safety and our city crews um, over the storm. At one point, I believe the fire department had five calls going at the very same time. They were able to handle it um, because of the other uh, agencies were busy as well. Law enforcement um, did a great job and of course, our electric and streets department, even wastewater and water had had issues. So um, good example of of getting things back up and running in a very short amount of time. Uh, the uh, music at the fountain, really nice to see, uh, group of community down there using the fountain. Um, it was a great turnout and uh, they even had people assisting crossing at the crosswalks. So that was the good, the youngest group. So enjoyed seeing that. Um, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Support.
And motion by Councilmember Karen, supported by Councilmember Wolfersberger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll the same sign. Meeting's adjourned.